Good morning. We'll call the February 6th, 2004 Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. This is our third meeting of the year. First, we will start and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the Agenda Review. Bob, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I do have two changes to the agenda today. One is the removal of the public comment. Did have a chance to talk to Mr. Luke Key, and he indicated he no longer needed to speak to the board at this time. And then the other revision is just to the county board minutes. I believe staff have provided you an updated first page of the minutes where we had a typo on the date there, so just a very minor correction to that. So with that, Mr. Chair, I present the revised agenda.
Okay, you heard the amendments, the agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move that.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The agenda as amended is approved. Next thing we will do is we will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I will call to order the Economic Development Authority meeting. And the first item is the Agenda Review on that.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda there.
I'll move the agenda.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is approved. Next item, number three, are the minutes of the January 2nd, 2024 Economic Development Authority meeting. What is your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Ever got a motion and a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is the Utility Allowance Schedule for Housing Choice Voucher Programs. Nancy, I'd ask you to come forward, please. Welcome.
Good morning, Nancy.
Morning, Nancy.
Morning, Nancy.
So today, I just wanted to bring before you the annual review of our utility allowance schedule. So every year, we do review that according to HUD regulations, and we do take into account costs from local vendors, from heating contractors, electric contractors, and then water and sewer with the local communities. And then we do compare that with consumption rates that our participants have. And where we don't, where we have gaps in the information, we do use a formula funding, a formula calculation to determine the allowances as established by HUD. This year, the changes that we had had to do with electric rates and water and sewer rates. And I just wanted to share with you two an example of how we use those utility allowances. So on the bottom of the memo, it does indicate for an average two-bedroom house, if you added the cost for electric heating, for the cooking expense for electrical, and for the water heater, you'd come up with a utility allowance of $238. We do add that to the tenant rent of $850. So then we get a gross rent of $1,088, and that is within our payment standard amount. So then that's how we are able to assist the families. So we do definitely add those costs to the rent to get a gross rent before we do the calculation. So I'm just bringing before you these new adjustments and asking you to approve them for the year.
Okay, thank you. Any clarifying questions?
You know, I have a feeling that we use an average from the year before to kind of figure out what the cost should be. Is that correct?
So we take their consumptions from last year, and we compare that to current rates that utility companies have. So we're using their current rates, and a lot of times throughout the year, they could have an increase. And at that time, we can review it if they do increase any utilities. And if it's more than 10%, then we can make another adjustment for you. But usually, it's not more than that 10%, and we bring it back to you the next year.
So what's going to happen next year when we have a regular winter? And I mean, this year is, for all of us, are loving our gas bills this year because we have an abnormal warm winter. What's going to happen next year, you know, when we take the average from this year into next year?
That would usually have an impact, and then we have to make an allowance for that. But I know in our case here in our jurisdiction, most of our tenants actually do not pay for the heating costs. They just pay the electric. And so we have to formula base a lot of it. The only time that we, those standards take, come into effect for consumptions has to do with more of the single-family houses. So our standards in that case was probably a little bit higher. So we're always overcompensating a little bit for the tenants to give them that benefit. But we do try to take that into consideration, and knowing this year, they'll be seeing different ones for next year. But
Thank you very much.
We take that into account.
Other questions? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution for the Economic Development Authority Housing Choice Voucher Utility Allowance Schedule.
Moved to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's carried. The allowance schedule is adopted. That is all we have for on our agenda. We will adjourn this meeting, and I will call back to order
Thanks, Nancy.
the Blue Earth County Board meeting. The next item on the agenda, item number five under tab two, is County Ditch 26 Bid Award. Ryan, please.
Good morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a quick bid award memo for County Ditch 26. Quotes were solicited from multiple contractors for the proposed repair work on County Ditch 26. These repairs include the cleaning and clearing of trees and brush proportions of open ditch, especially portions lying in the southeast quarter of Section 9 McPherson Township. On January 12th, 2024, four bid submissions were received for the repair work. The engineer's estimate for this proposed repair work is $120,107.35. The four submitted quotes are provided in the table below, with the lowest quote submitted by Newman Excavating, with a lump sum quote of $99,375. Excuse me. ISG has worked with Newman Excavating on past projects with similar scope of work with positive results. ISG recommends awarding the project to Newman Excavating. Today, we are requesting the Dringe Authority to award the bid to Newman Excavating in the amount of $99,375 for the proposed repair work for County Ditch 26. That is all, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any clarifying questions?
I'll move approval.
We've got a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion?
Mr. Chair, those are good bids.
Yeah.
Now, was the tree cleaning in this bid, or was there more tree cleaning outside of this bid?
The tree cleaning is only this bid.
Is this bid?
Yes.
All right.
The other additional items that you maybe are alluding to will come
Later.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, because it's
Yep. For sure.
All righty.
Another discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. This bid award for tree and brush cleaning is approved.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Item number six on our agenda under tab three is a Local Option Sales Tax Public Hearing. At this time, we will open up the Blue Earth County Local Option Sales Tax Public Hearing. This hearing provides an opportunity for citizens to voice your opinion on the proposed Blue Earth County Local Option Sales Tax in a public setting. I'll ask our county engineer, Mr. Ryan Tilges, to present an introduction to the hearing and a brief description of the proposed sales tax. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, Ryan.
Thank you for time this morning in consideration of the update to the Local Option Sales Tax Projects List. As you know, by Minnesota State statute, Blue Earth County has enacted a Local Option Sales Tax, which was actually approved initially in 2015, and began assessing tax at one-half of a percent of the sales within Blue Earth County in, I believe, April of 2016. And the sales taxes become a vital workhorse for us within the Public Works Department for delivery of road and bridge infrastructure projects. It's really significantly helped us try to bridge the gap between what we achieve through local property taxes and the county stated highway through the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund. There's a significant gap between those fund sources and the actual need of our system. So with that, recognizing that the initial projects list was nearing completion, we still have significant need in and around the county. The county undertook a process of developing a long-range transportation plan update, which was approved recently. And as part of that year-plus-long long-range transportation plan study, one of the key aspects of it was for the consultant firm to develop a project list that included projects both within the MAPO long-range transportation plan and within that Blue Earth County long-range transportation plan that considers all the areas outside of the MAPO boundary, and incorporate those into potential projects that could utilize the Local Option Sales Tax in an extension or consideration of a new adopted projects list. So the new adopted projects list is in the county board packet. There's a map on the front page showing all of the project locations, and the projects are further subdivided on the second page into Mankato Area Roads. That includes the road number, description, termini, length, estimated cost, and brief description of the work scope for Mankato Area Roads, Greater Blue Earth County Rural Area Roads, small city or county stated highway projects, and then pavement preservation on an annual basis, as well as a listing of current bridges and culverts in need of replacement, and a few trail and rural transit projects. The total estimated project cost for all of those projects that would be eligible to utilize the Local Option Sales Tax is $218,590,000. And again, that's all of our projects. Instead of just selecting specific projects that could utilize the sales tax as was done on the previous, the projects list, we decided to make all of the projects eligible because it gives our department more flexibility with those fund sources. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any clarifying questions before we ask for public comment?
Mr. Chair, so we have overlay of 420 miles. So we have 420 miles of blacktop road?
Thereabouts, yes. So that's based on a process of thinking that we should be overlaying those roads on a 15- to 20-year cycle, meaning we should be overlaying about 20 miles of roads a year.
I was just thinking, we only had about 350 miles of paved roads, so new number I got to remember, I guess.
I believe it's closer to 440, actually.
440?
Thereabouts.
Okay. I'm hearing none. Other questions at this time?
One other item, I guess I would just add for clarification. As we view this list and as we look at it through a fiscally constrained lens, this is approximately a 15-year projects list. So I just wanted to iterate that.
$218 million over 15 years is
Approximately what we would forecast our revenues and expenditures to be.
Good. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Please note this meeting is being recorded. There is a five-minute time limit. I've asked the county administrator to give a one-minute warning and let you know when the time allotted is used up. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. If you wish to make a comment, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. I'll ask for a second time if there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on the long-range or the Local Option Sales Tax. And I will ask for a third and final time anyone wishing to comment on the Local Option Sales Tax. Seeing no comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and refer back to the Board of Commissioners for consideration of the county board resolution. What is your wishes?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's carried. The Local Option Sales Tax hearing is concluded. This concludes this public hearing. We will move on to item number seven on the agenda under tab four, the Public Works Report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. First action item for consideration is a Declaration of Restrictive Covenant for Bray Park. This covers the entirety of the Bray Park property. This formally approves a deed restriction for the park, which is required to complete the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant funding source that was utilized for completion of the playground equipment reconstruction project. This formally restricts the deed for the property. However, there was previously a deed restriction agreed to by the county Public Works Department for a previous project utilizing the same fund source. This is a common covenant that's required for parks when we utilize this fund source. So the previous restriction was never recorded with the deed. However, the DNR and the county both have copies of the agreement for the restriction, so it's effective somewhat regardless. This just formalizes it so that we can finalize this process and close out our funding source. I will pass around a paper copy of this because it does require notarization, and I don't believe we're able to do that electronically yet. So I would request the board to approve the deed restriction covenant.
Okay. You've heard the staff's recommendation. What is your pleasure?
I'll move.
Okay, we've got a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion? Discussion. Are we ready to vote on the Restrictive Covenant Declaration?
Mr. Chair, I just maybe would add one comment. I asked Ryan to bring this forward just because I wanted the board to be aware that this does kind of cover the full park, even though it's a kind of a relatively small part of the park that has received grant funds. And so I just wanted the board to be cognizant of the fact that this is a large deed restriction. I think we have the potential to adjust that in the future. I think we just have to go back to the state. But it is kind of restricting what future use or, you know, what you could do, say, with the campground in that particular park. And so I just thought it was important that the board consider those ramifications a little bit.
Thank you for that. Other questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's carried. Motion's carried.
All right, thank you. Action item number two is consideration of an intent to cost participate, intent to cost participate agreement. Easy for me to say. Agreement with the City of Mankato for the construction of signals and lighting at the intersection of Cassau 3, which is North Victory Drive and Hazelteen Road, along with Cassau 3 corridor lighting in calendar year 2025. This is a relatively new project that's come up through the City of Mankato as part of the significant development that'll be taking place north and west of County Stated Highway 3 and at the intersection with Hazelteen Road. So in order to facilitate that, signal is warranted at that intersection, as well as some rounding out, some additional corridor lighting that's missing in that segment, and then interconnecting the signals so that they all talk to each other and function better. And that's something we've cost participated on in the past. I want to ensure that that continues to operate well. With that, I would recommend the cost participation agreement be awarded or be approved.
I'll move it.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion?
That is a busy intersection right now. People coming out of that area, you know, have a very hard time getting onto Victory Drive. So it'd be positive to get some signals on there. And looking at the future of that area with the City of Mankato's growing, that's going to be a very, very busy intersection. So very positive.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The intent to cost participate agreement is approved.
All right. Action item three is listed as a discussion item. However, I guess it should be discussion slash action item. With this, we wanted to discuss authorizing me and our staff to obtain an appraisal for the purchase of a portion of the property located directly west of the Vernon Center shop in the City of Vernon Center. As we've discussed in the past, the landowner has approached the county about purchasing effectively the northern half of that parcel that's unoccupied and undeveloped, aside from, I think it's an old chicken coop that's there, and purchasing that. And the county sees significant interest and benefit in that because it would provide an opportunity to expand, if nothing else, probably our lay-down yard and our parking area for the Vernon Center shop, which is somewhat geographically pinched with a relatively small lot that we have there. Not necessarily looking to, you know, right now to put up any buildings of any sort, but it would just give us some breathing room and protect that from somebody buying it and using it for a different purpose that we would never be able to utilize. So with that being said, per the board's instruction, we did reach out to the landowners that are directly across the street to the west. I believe two out of the four homes, we were able to reach the tenants, and they had no issues with what we were proposing to utilize it for. I mean, we're already there regardless. So they were, had actually hoped we would maybe clean it up and probably keep it in better state of repair. So that was reassuring to hear. We did have conversations with the mayor of the city, and obviously, this would have to go through a rezoning process because it's currently zoned residential, and it would have to go to more of a light industrial use. So what we would propose to do would be for today for the county board to authorize us to proceed with obtaining an appraisal for purchase of that property. And I would bring that forward after we obtain those residential appraisal reports and share that with the county board and work with the landowner toward development of a purchase agreement for the property for the board to consider in the future. And I would anticipate that the purchase agreement for the property would be contingent on the residential to industrial rezoning being successful. And as part of that agreement, we would likely be required to compensate the landowner for any external costs that they may incur before going through that process in addition to the appraised value of the property or the negotiated value of the property.
Okay. To get this on the table, I'll ask for a motion so we can discuss it.
So moved.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Questions?
This is the property we drove by and looked at when we were on our road tour.
Yes.
I think this would be in the best interest of the county to purchase this piece of property. And I'm hoping they would rezone it. But I don't think I would take it off the table if they didn't rezone it, just because it might be best for us to have control of that property, even if, just so we don't have another person building a house there and having to deal with that. So not that that, I mean, obviously, it would make way more sense for us to have it, but just for the future of it not being, just having a control, it might make a lot of sense to us, too. We've seen the property. It looks like it would be a good parcel to have.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And currently, all our access is coming from the east or the north off of the county road.
Correct.
We probably wouldn't intend to do any access from the west or anything else, and possibly could leave those, that row of trees or whatever as far as
Yep.
some sort, or replace it with something appropriate for the residential
Correct. We preached with all of our shops that we want to be good neighbors, and we would certainly carry that sentiment to the Vernon Center location if we expand the site boundaries there. Yes.
Thank you. Other questions?
You said two of the four.
The, yes.
What about three and four?
I believe one is in a state of vacancy, perhaps due to some delinquent behaviors that I speculate on. And I can't, I can't honestly say what the fourth was. We tried repeatedly to contact the landowners.
Nothing negative. You just didn't get response.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
I believe it might be up for sale.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Anything else? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried.
All right. Thank you for that. Information updates on some of our projects and goings-on within the Public Works Department. County stated Highway 13 from US 169 to Cassau 1. We're still working on the bridge. Continuing both abutments and the center channel pier are done. The contractor's working on removal of the sheet pile cofferdam that they used to construct that center channel pier. So they're going to be set to put the beams in here within the next, end of this week, potentially, or early next week. So it's mind-boggling that we built a bridge over the winter, but it's fantastic that we were poised to do so and we had the weather cooperate with us. The contractor's going to prepare the bridge with some of the supports for the forms and false works so that if an opportune week or so of weather presents itself, they would be in position to be able to deck, tie the steel for the concrete deck, and then actually pour the concrete deck and allow it to cure. So we're not pushing them to do that because we want to, we don't want to sacrifice quality to have it done in the winter. However, if the weather continues to cooperate to the extent that it has, I think there's going to be an opportunity for that to happen, and the contractor has work lined up after this. So they certainly are eager to continue working on this project. So, so far, so good. It's really, it looks like we're going to be in good position, and it got us out of our permitting issues with the, with the Army Corps and the DNR, too. So we really don't anticipate the grading work to resume, though, until spring. If we have an early spring, we'd anticipate the contractor getting out there. But we've got a lot of supposed winter left yet that I think the contractor's going to be cautious about. Cassau 11 from the west county line to Cassau 6 is being advertised for bids right now. I anticipate opening bids on February 28th and then bringing those to for board consideration on March 5th. Cassau 82 from south of Hoffman to Fair Street. Again, that southern segment from south of Hoffman to south of Main Street. Plans have been submitted to Mendot for approval. We're working on obtaining the permanent right-of-way from the City of Mankato. That should be a non-issue, even if it ends up just being easement or temporary construction approval. And then we also need a couple of temporary easements from landowners at the corner of Hoffman and Victory, just effectively for grading and slope easement, things of that nature, temporary easements. With that being said, we tentatively plan to open bids on March 20th and award on April 9th. Again, that is pending the Local Road Improvement Program Grant Award announcements because we did have a grant application in for $1.5 million toward that project. That would be hugely beneficial for us just from a programmatic standpoint of being able to deliver several other projects if we were able to get a shot in the arm for this project. Cassau 5 from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue. We're sending out proposals to consultant firms for professional engineering design services, and an intent to cost participate agreement has been shared with the City of Mankato, and it is tentatively planned for county board consideration on March 5th. I believe the city council will be considering that between now and then. So that's moving forward for design as our 2026 kind of next big project after Victory Drive within Mankato, and that'll be a very significant, large project. Probably about $2 million worth of city utility relocations along the entirety, or relocation reconstruction along the entirety of that project as well. The City of Mankato has a lot of sanitary sewer and water main underneath there, so it'll be more time-consuming and a larger disturbance project than initially thought due to the city utility impacts. This year, we also have planned to replace the bridge on Cassau 29. The plans and project memorandum are approved. We're working on obtaining a right-of-way before we are authorized to bid the project. So that's really the last linchpin is obtaining the right-of-way and submitting the right-of-way certificate. That project is federally funded, 80% federally funded, and then I believe the remaining 20% is coming from the local bridge program. So that's a great project. That's some of the IIJA money at work here in Blue Earth County. And then County Stated Highways 15 and 28 in St. Clair that are included in our draft Transportation Improvement Program Update for 2025. I drafted an intent to cost participate agreement, and that was sent to St. Clair for project development. I plan on bringing that to the board on March 5th as well for consideration. I believe the city will consider that prior to the county board meeting as well. Following that, the ICP agreement, we will consider a professional services solicitation for design work and contract administration. We talked a little bit about the 2024 to 2028 Transportation Improvement Program Plan Update. The draft tip was posted on the county website last week for public comments with a press release and social media posts as well. We're accepting comments until Fri- We're accepting comments until Friday, February 21st, and I tend to plan on bringing that to the county board for consideration on the final 2024 to 202028 tip on March 5th. One thing on that, I would maybe ask the board for a little bit of feedback. That document is, you know, has, has several pages for each project. It includes kind of a, a project narrative and maps and things of that nature. And speaking with colleagues, several of them are really just boiling it down to basically a map and a spreadsheet, and I guess I would ask the county board, because there's quite a bit of staff time that goes into putting together this, this narrative and just the body of the document. Do, does the board see value in that or not? Otherwise, I would maybe propose in future years as we update this to be more of that master spreadsheet that has the project termini and descriptions and, and then a map that would support where those projects are with a brief description. We, we generally don't get a lot of feedback on this as a whole from the public. That's why we've stopped having open house meetings for it and gone to more of this online outreach, because it, there's a higher opportunity that we get any feedback whatsoever through the online approach versus public meetings.
Chair. Yes. I would appreciate it if all we had was the map and then.
Okay.
One spreadsheet. Just like when we go to our legislative events, we have a one-page thing that we bring to.
Yes.
Our, our agencies so they can look at it. If you give them too much, they're just not going to look at it. I think if we had that, we, we'd be able to express what we are doing easier to our constituents, you know, instead of saying, well, here's a book, you can read through it. So personally, I, I like the idea of just having a map and a spreadsheet get to the points of what we're doing.
I appreciate that. This is a little bit of, that's the way we've always done it yet, and I've been perpetuating that, and I, I despise that saying, so that's why I wanted to reconsider it and bring it before the board for discussion.
Do we have any requirements for that plan to be in any format or access to a full, is there a full plan, or would it just be then the?
My intent, and I can go verify that with state aid, but my intent would be that it would just be effectively a, a five-year at-a-glance spreadsheet and a map of the project.
That would be acceptable.
I, I can verify that. Again, I, I, speaking with other counties, that's what they're doing, so I certainly presume that that's the case.
I mean, I would fully support, you know, having something as far as in the packet of things like that, and let's make sure if we need to have a complete document somewhere, we don't necessarily need to have it as part of that board book possibly, but we do need a link or something to have access to it if it is required.
Yep.
If it's not required, it's not an issue.
I'm good with that also. Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. Some maintenance activity updates. The crews have been and will continue working on brush cutting and cutting brush and trees back within the road rights of way around the county. They've been busy taking advantage of these, bit of moisture that we've had and the temperature, temperatures being adequate to blade and recompact the gravel roads. I know they were getting really rough prior to receiving some of that moisture, so we've been out, and I think we've been covering nearly all of our gravel roads, getting them in good shape. Should we get another, you know, snow event, that they'll be recompacted in, in good condition so that hopefully they won't have damage that we would see of this blading typically during this season. If the weather continues to be fair, we'll be doing some long-needed maintenance within our outshops as well, and then we're also rehabilitating our fleet. You know, we're not as busy, obviously, plowing snow, and I think we're mostly done stockpiling materials, so we're going to be rewiring, redecking trailers, repairing and performing upgrades on miscellaneous equipment, welding and painting truck boxes and plows, things of that nature. So it's, it's kind of nice to have this opportunity to get some of those backburner items done and, and take care of some of our equipment with, with some free time versus being out on the road, plowing around the clock like we were last year. The EV Pickup Carbon Reduction Grant Program update, the CRP has achieved the STIP approval, and it now requires MAPLE approval, so the Area Transportation Partnership had to initially approve that within that STIP update, and then the MAPLE approved it. I believe the MAPLE Executive Committee meets, the Policy Board, I'm sorry, meets this upcoming week mark maybe, and will be considering that. We, we already approved it at a TAC level a couple of weeks ago. Once that's obtained, we'll receive a grant agreement for execution. We'll execute that grant agreement, and then we'll have approval to bid those trucks. So it's been a long path to get here, but this is somewhat unchartered, I think. In fact, I was at another meeting, and MSU had pursued this grant the year prior to buy a small electric bus, and they're just having fits because the Buy America requirements at the time for them were that they had to lease, they couldn't purchase, which greatly complicated the process, which is why we pumped the brakes and got that clarification for Buy America, so that we can just flat-out purchase the trucks. I do believe we need to own them for seven years, I believe was the period that was cited to me from, from the state, however, I don't see that being a significant issue. Last but not least, there was a rap, brief Rapid Andam update. Not a lot, again, happening on the front of the Rapid Andam. On December 28th, the FERC issued a letter to the State Historic Preservation Office regarding Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, consultation on surrender application. The letter provided a background surrender application information, a pre-filing consultation, and public notice, and a determination of effect, which stated that the approval of this undertaking would adversely affect the potentially historic project features because of a loss of federal jurisdiction. However, no structural modifications are proposed as part of this surrender. As you may recall, we, we said that basically we're just looking at this point in time to surrender the license, and then a decision will be made regarding the fate of the dam following the surrender of the license after that's completed or in greater state of progress. So going from there, that we're not proposing modifications as part of the surrender, and the dam would remain in place throughout the process of this surrender. No ground disturbance would occur, no changes in the project's reservoir elevations would result from a surrender of the project. Given no physical changes are proposed, the FERC believes that no mitigation is necessary for this adverse effect. So effectively, that's not for potential removal of the dam, that's just for getting rid of the federal license. The letter requested ship-o comments. Within 30 days of the letter, I've not heard back on ship-o's response. On January 18th, bar staff provided an update regarding their conversations with the FERC, stating that the FERC is still working on reviewing the application and is awaiting the ship-o response. And again, we're doing our routine safety monitoring, but this process is painstakingly slow. Not on my agenda, but last but not least, I wanted to, again, congratulate Commissioner Steunberg on his prestigious award. I won't repeat what he said to me when he walked up to the table as he was surprised with this award because it was pro. But congratulations in all sincerity, well-deserved as an advocate for transportation within the state of Minnesota. I told Commissioner Steunberg that I, I'm not on the award committee, so I, I would like to take more credit for this than I can, but that's how much of an impact he's made that my colleagues have noticed, the work that he's doing, and, and actually approached me about giving him the award, and I said absolutely yes. And then the real challenge was trying to, trying to surprise him with it, which I think we pulled off. So congratulations again, and, and well-deserved, so.
Well, I was completely honored and surprised. Took me off guard, but thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. All right.
Good, thank you, Ray.
Have you answered any questions, authority? If not?
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, we will move to agenda item number eight under tab five, county attorney. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners. I'll answer any specific questions anybody has, or at least attempt to. I know you've got a full plate on your schedule today. Couple of things I just wanted to draw to your attention that really aren't in the, the statistics that I provide on a monthly basis. Right now, we're, we have filed, and these are probably about a week behind so far, 65 truancies in court filings, which we try to avoid, but those are up a little bit this year. We have had what we refer to as tip meetings, truancy intervention program meetings, where an attorney will go out to the schools and speak with students and their parent or parents or guardian, if they so choose to show up and explain to them the process of, if they don't go to school, what's going to happen. We've had 335 of those types of meetings. And then a couple of years ago, with corrections, we started a student event advisory review team, and that is more individualized to the students, and we meet with the students and their representatives from the schools as well, and corrections and our office, and so far, the, this year, we've had 121 of those, what we refer to as the SART team meetings. The other thing I'd like to draw to your attention, I know that you're aware of the increase in property taxes, especially for some of the apartment buildings and things of that nature. I know there was some information in the media of some of, a 36% increase in, in property tax values. Last year, we had 25 tax court filings, which if you go back 10 years ago, that's down, but I think that that number's probably going to pop up, so it's going to put a little bit of more work on and strain on staff in our office as well. So we'll keep you informed, because I forget the exact date, but it's coming up in the next couple of months that they'll be able to file for tax court, and then it gets shut off. So any questions, concerns, or comments, otherwise I'll let you get back to it.
Thank you, sir.
Questions for the county attorney?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Item number nine on the agenda is administration. Bob, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is county board minutes for January 23rd. As I mentioned at the start of the meeting, there is a minor correction to the minutes that were in the packet, just adjusting a date, so recommending approval of those adjusted minutes.
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the amended minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The minutes are approved as amended.
Next are the two, oh, the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passed, the bills are approved.
The next, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is tab eight is the Human Resources Department agenda. Do have three action items for the board's consideration today, and so maybe I would recommend we deal with each one of those individually. Starting with the authorization for the county board chair and administrator to adopt a post-employment health plan for public employees for the employees of the Law Enforcement Labor Services Command Unit staff. There is a memo in the packet from our Human Resources Director providing a little more background on this issue. Basically, since this is the first contract we had with this bargaining group, the administrator of the fund has indicated they'd like a formal resolution from the county board authorizing this post-employment health plan, and so we're bringing that resolution forward for the board's consideration today.
I'll move approval.
We've got a motion?
Second.
Got a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is approved.
Item B under the action item is authorization to initiate recruitment for, for a program coordinator in our hazardous waste area. This is a position that basically runs the household hazardous waste facility. We did have a vacancy as a previous employee left the county, and so as a part of that process, we reviewed the job description for that role, made some adjustments, did send the position, the revised job description position to our consultant DDA to review the grade level of that position. They did recommend an increase from grade six to grade seven, and so we're bringing that grade adjustment here to the board for your consideration before we begin recruitment for filling that position.
I'll move approval.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, is approved.
Thank you. Item C then is authorization to initiate recruitment for a clerical specialist one in the sheriff's office. Again, there is a memo from the Human Resources Director in the packet. This would be a part-time position, up to 29 hours per week, to provide assistance with conceal-and-carry permits. We have seen an increase in the number of those permits, and there has been some additional legislation that has shifted, some more background work to the county. The sheriff had approached me April, May of last year for some additional assistance there. Under my authority in our employee handbook, I did authorize a temporary position to see kind of what the workload was and what our revenue stream looked like. The sheriff is reporting that the, the workload, workload continues to be high, the revenues will cover the cost of the position, and so the sheriff has asked if we could make that a permanent position. So we're bringing it here today for the board's consideration to authorize effectively a new position, even though it has been filled for a while in a temporary situation.
I would move to approve.
We've got a motion?
Second.
Got a second discussion? Discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, it is authorized.
Thank you. Then I just have some informational items for the board's awareness. We did have resignation of a application developer in our information technology division, and so we're initiating recruitment to refill that position. We did have a promotion of a clerical specialist in our human services area to an eligibility specialist in that same department, and you met that individual this morning, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that clerical specialist two position. We filled a couple of positions in our human services area, a social worker in our behavioral health case management area, as well as a children's mental health case manager. Then we had a promotion of a property environmental resources specialist one to a specialist two level. Then we did fill an appraiser two position. This was a challenging position. We weren't quite sure when we recruited for this position that we would find somebody that met the certification requirements of the appraiser two level, so we're really pleased to have an individual actually returning to the county, a previous employee that went to, I believe, Nicola County, now returning to Blue Earth County. Then we filled a maintenance technician one position in our public works area. We did have a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator in our dispatch center, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And finally, we filled an assistant county attorney in our criminal prosecution area position that has been vacant for some time, so we're happy to fill that position. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions for the administrator?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
All right. Item number nine in your packet then is a revised board calendar for 2024. Just have one adjustment to the calendar, and it really is moving a early December date to November 26th. That would also be the day then of the budget hearing for 2025. We did run into some conflicts with a NACO meeting in early December when we had initially scheduled that first December meeting, and so staff felt like moving the meeting back a week or so would be the best option for us. It does make for a crowded November, which is a short month to begin with, but this was the best option we could come up with. So that's the recommendation of staff, and we're bringing it here for the board's consideration.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation to amend the board calendar. What's your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
We've got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried, the calendar is approved, and we apologize in advance for squeezing the budget. the budget timeline maybe a little more, but we know staff can make that work.
We do our best, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next item, please.
Item Number Ten in your packet is a memo regarding County Ditch 35. This is regarding Minnesota Department of Transportation, appeal to some assessments that the ditch system made for improvements to the ditch system. County Ditch 35 is located in Mapleton Township and recently went through a redetermination of benefits and an improvement project that affected the drainage system. This drainage system does go underneath Highway 22, and so MINDOT was assessed some fees associated with the redetermination of benefits and the improvement process. And so when that process was going on, MINDOT ultimately did appeal that assessment, and so we engaged Rinky Noonan, attorneys representing the ditch system, to try and reach resolution with MINDOT. That was unsuccessful, and so it was suggested that the parties go to mediation, which we did on January 30th. And so through that process, Commissioner Pap, Commissioner Brunder and staff were involved in the mediation process, along with Rinky Noonan, our attorneys representing the county. We ultimately did reach an agreement that we're bringing forward for the board's consideration today. Basically, kind of in a nutshell, the MINDOT agreed to the assessment based on benefits. So that amount wasn't in question, but there was some improvement costs. The county was requesting on behalf of the ditch system $88,000 roughly. The mediated settlement put it at $50,000, and so there are some costs that will need to be juggled around, but rather than go to an appeal court and deal with the ramifications of more legal time, more staff time, we felt that this mediated settlement was worthy of the board's consideration today. Commissioner Pap or Commissioner Brunder, you may have additional comments you'd like to share, but I think everyone was in agreement that that was a good mediated settlement.
I would say you summarized that very well.
Absolutely agree. All right. And ask, indicate a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried, the agreement is adopted.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item Number 11 in the packet is the Fourth Quarter Donations Report. You'll see that we had about $12,000 of monetary donations, mostly to the library, and so we did also receive some funding in the Sheriff's Office for dive and rescue operations, as well as a few donations towards our veterans' van. And so you'll see the various sources of those donations on the first page. Second page of the report just shows some of the in-kind donations, again, primarily focused towards library services. And then the last page gets into time given to the libraries, the volunteers that have assisted with activities at the library. So we bring this report forward for the board's consideration and acceptance, if you find it acceptable.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the report? Is there a second? Second discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the report is approved.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We will move to Item Number 10 on the agenda, Commissioners' Reports on Committees. Mr. Brunder, would you start us off, please?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chair. My report is relatively short, but was still awfully busy. After the last board meeting, I had my emergency communication board. We had met with our RAC at the same time, so the advisory board, basically, and the full board meet together, and it is very beneficial. We get to hear from the sheriffs, those, the guys that are on the ground doing the work. A lot of discussion around some new 911 language that they want to try to get passed and get some certification for our 911 dispatchers. Sheriffs are a little concerned about it, but we are just working through that, and things are going really well. And again, having that meeting, joint meeting, was very beneficial. The 35 mediation was already mentioned. I thought we did negotiate a good settlement there. A lot of different concerns in the room. A relatively large group of people to negotiate such a small amount, but I guess it is what it is. Then we were up at the MICA Annual Meeting, which I thought went very well. Matt and his staff did a great job keeping things moving, but I will mention that I think I noticed he kept us on track for everything except for getting us all back together after the social hour. We lost about 15 minutes there, if I recall, so he has a hard time corralling the commissioners. He keeps his staff on task, but he has a hard time keeping the commissioners on task. But I thought that went very well, and hearing from the guest speaker at the end of the meeting was very entertaining, and it was a trip that was worthwhile. And then we had our new employee orientation this morning, which is always a pleasure to do and see the new faces and some people that we know. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mark, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, let's see, we had Partners for Housing on the 25th of January, and we do have the Partners Pedal Past Poverty coming up on the 24th of February, last Saturday of February, so I appreciate everybody's support. I was trying to think, that I think it's been, am I dead, 11th, 12th year or something? There's only a handful of us left that have been there from the beginning of the partners, so. Pedaling, pedaling a lot, but anyway, appreciate your support. And I guess, well, as Kip said, with the MICA Annual Meeting, that was worthwhile, and I especially did enjoy the gentleman they had there, the, well, kind of the politics and stuff. I thought that was interesting. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
All righty. February 1st, I too attended the MICA meeting, which was my first MICA meeting, and I thought it was really good. Yesterday, I met with the Executive Director of TDS. I had my NACO FICA meeting yesterday afternoon, and this morning, new employee orientation.
Thank you. Commissioner.
I also have a very short list. On the 20, Monday, the 29th, I had a Transportation Alliance Board of Directors meeting. On February 1st, I had a NACO Transportation meeting, followed by a Towards Zero Death meeting, or South Central Steering Committee meeting at MINDOT. And then yesterday, I had an MRCI Board meeting. And again, this morning, the new employees meeting, with the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. For myself, since our January 23rd board meeting, the next day on the 24th, as Vice Chair of AMC, Environmental Natural Resource Policy Committee, the Chair and the Vice Chairs, we met with the Bowser Executive Director and their management team, Board of Water and Soil Resources, as well as the Minnesota Pollution Control Commissioner and Assistant Commissioners, and went over our priorities for the upcoming year. On the 25th, I participated at the GMG Legislative Forum here in North Mankato. The January 30th mediation has already been mentioned, I participated in that. On the 31st, as a Subcommittee Chair or Vice Chair of the NACO Ag Policy Committee, I will be moderating a farm bill forum at the NACO Legislative Forum. We had a call with House and Senate staff to put that together, then also participated in the True Transit Advisory Committee meeting that afternoon. I too was at the MICA Annual Meeting in Wynona, and employee orientation this morning. That concludes my report. That concludes our agenda. At this time, I would ask that for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are adjourned. It is at 10 o'clock. We will start the work session in 15 minutes at 10:15.